Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to One and All for this annual town meeting on Monday the 13th of May 2024. As usual, I must remind you of the usual housekeeping stuff. If there's a fire alarm go off, then please leave the building by the stairs. Do not use the lift. There are fire escapes both ends of the downstairs hallway. Those that need it, we have the vacuum chair or whatever it's called. And I understand you'd be unable to work it. I can probably remember years ago how to work one. This meeting is being live streamed, so if you object to being seen on camera, please say so now. And can you all ensure that mobile phones are turned off, please? So we do not get disturbed. Thank you. Just a little note for councillor Pinell, who apparently is watching us from where? Perth in Australia. Hi, Melvin. We move on to agenda item number one, which is apologies for absence. Councillor Pinell. Item two, to receive, confirm and sign the minutes of the annual town meeting of Monday the 5th of May 2023. Now, you will have a copy in your pack, and I'm sure you've all read it avidly. Did you want to comment, Karen? So I will take it that we have received them and confirmed and signed them, well, I've signed them anyway. Did we? Yeah. Thank you, councillor. Got them. A vote, please. Unanimous. We then move on to something called the chairman's annual recall. Right. I would like to thank the two ladies, Jackie and Donna. They have stepped up to the plate and took over the management of the office in the council when our then-town clerk left his post. And I'm sure you will all agree that they've done a marvellous job. I certainly cannot remember a time when this council has run so smoothly, so I think they've done a wonderful job. I'd also like to thank councillor Brockelhurst for his admirable support to me throughout the past year through his role as deputy chair. Also for his stepping in to cover me in civic duty appointments at short notice, which is most... Thank you. Thank you. My big thanks go to the town keepers. Because they kept our town looking tidy, looking good, despite the awful weather that was a major feature of late winter and most of springtime. Councillor Gorrance deserves a mention for his sterling work, supported by councillor Brockelhurst in getting the town two new defibrillators. And having them installed, one by Mr Jeez and one by Manor House class. So with an aging population, I think they're a very sound thing to have. Councillor LeCannick deserves a special mention for his match funding for the lovely new bus shelters in London Road. Although I've just been told they've got circus posters on there. Now, two councillors and a member of the public attended the retrospective planning application meeting in Norwich regarding the second railway siding at Brandon station. All three spoke to the committee and they were able to get two conditions added to Norfolk County Council's approval of the application. They were, one, that the operators install an HGV chassis and wheel wash to stop some of the dust coming out of the station yard. The second one, and most importantly, that all HGV traffic to and from the site do not drive through Brandon High Street. And I'm sure you may have already noticed a big absence of aggregate vehicles driving through our town. Last but not least, and I'm sure all credible will wish to give our very own Dennis Coburn congratulations in licensing as a cura in charge on serving this community. Finally, I must say, and this is my bit. And I don't know who wrote this, but last but not least, and then finally, there we go. I must say, it has been a real, real pleasure, honour and privilege to serve this council's chair for the last 12 months. And I have had a gall in many respects doing so. Thank you. Move on to item four, which is to receive reports from charities, the Brandon Coors Estate, the Edmund Hatley Charity, the Nigged Trust Charity and Brandon Remembrance Playing Fields, not necessarily in that order. They're in the pack, are they? Right, okay, well, if they're all in the pack, I'll take it that you've all read them. And we will move on to agenda item number five, which is actually going this open to the whole room as it's your town, it's your town meeting. I will say that next year, we're looking to do the town meeting on a separate day to the AGM, which will then give the townsfolk much more time to talk and discuss their concerns, needs, worries, wants, not wants, everything else. But over to you.
Good evening, everyone. My main concern is the speed of the new cemetery. The existing cemetery at the moment has been an awful lot of burials. Not much land now is left. I understand that the problem is with planning, but it's becoming very, very urgent. I really think that the planning committee, whoever they are on the new cemetery, please communicate that in a most urgent intention. And perhaps instead of just one visit to the cemetery a year through August 1, perhaps make it two, so that you can see what exactly is happening there with the amount of burials. Also, because we're now hoping, and we're just here, that not everybody wants to be promoted. So burials need to be, you know, to be thought about and appreciated if you could look into that, yes? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure everybody will know. Mr Brown?
Yeah. Just a quick one for councillor Brockelhurst and councillor Pinell's on there, I believe. I'm a bit fed up with questions and rumours about how we found out about your illicit meeting with the applicant at the Bridge Hotel. So to put the rumours to rest, we found out through big mouths of big egos. And if you're going to have little meetings with councillors, don't do it in public places because people hear and people talk. And that is how we found out. Had you not been overheard, we would not have found out. On the basis of what you've done, you compromise the councillors, it has been reported. And I would say, given that this is an AGM personally, if you're put forward to take your current seat, the chair or any committee position, I would question what the councillors are doing around this table. If you're prepared to do that and do that to other councillors, I don't think, we don't think, you should be taking a position like that. And you shouldn't be put forward for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Throw it up in the councillors.
Yeah, I'll have a...
Well done, Peter.
Always. We've got a few minutes, I thought, some of the...
Nothing gets done, doesn't it? Nothing gets done, even when you say...
Yeah, that's right.
...right for a zoo, for a start. They shouldn't even be trading. Right, and they're trying to swap the numbers over. Right, and to check the land registry, a zoo should be 15 and the flat 17 above. But they've tried 17 onto 15 and 15 onto 17. Right, and if you check the land registry, that is totally illegal. But nothing's done about it. You as all the town councillors, you should be down there looking at it and seeing what you should do about it.
I might say that that's actually a district level.
You've already passed up...
Well, no, no, no.
You are the councillors for this town. I'm not talking about West Suffolk or anything like that. I'm talking about Brandon Town Council. That is what you represent. And don't say, you cast up every time there is something like this. And you know yourselves, if you walk down that High Street, look at, right, Tilly's was number 15.
Yeah.
It is a business, right? On the land registry, it is down as a business. 17 was Chris Rickards' old flat, and that is down as a domestic. And they have swapped their numbers round.
Yeah, well, that's not right. And I...
Thank you very much, it's against the law.
Please bear with me, it's not an issue that... It's beyond the pay grade of Brandon Town Council. It then goes to the West Suffolk District Council that have the teeth. And I will certainly take that to West Suffolk District Council on your behalf.
Yeah, and I know the post of this is looking into it as well.
Yeah, 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 because the...
Because that is totally illegal.
Yeah, you can't just swap numbers on different buildings, especially when they're registered for different uses. So, yeah, I will definitely take that to West Suffolk District Council, but unfortunately, it is beyond the pay grade as humble as sitting at this table as town councillors. Peter?
Well, and that is quite correct about this cemetery. It's been going on for some years now, and I hope we're not going to go down the same route as the carpet place at Thetford, where the council, Thetford Council purchased the building from Mr Guthrie to turn it into something to do with a bus station. And because it didn't go ahead, they gave the building back to Mr Guthrie. That's compensation. So I'm hoping we don't do the same thing with our cemetery. We own the land. I hope you haven't got to give it back to Mr DeLupe now.
Well, so do I, but I don't think it...
I've just lost three friends just recently, in the last few weeks, and they are buried.
Yeah.
Where hopefully I'm going to be put. You know, and that is quite right in saying that we haven't got much space left, so we ought to be...
No, it is quite an urgent situation, Peter, I agree. But as I understand it now, the planning is held up because new legislation from government is saying, perhaps we will have to build the land up there. I think I'm right in saying that. If that's the case, it is going to be prohibitively expensive to do. And we will not, as a council, be able to afford to do it. So it's just something to bear in mind. It's something we are working on and working with. And further, the archaeology, as I understood it, have gone back to their stupid want to have the whole site scraped again, haven't they?
They did, but we can't do anything about that until it's been deplanning.
No, no, that will come out after or during planning. So whilst I take on board exactly what you're saying, if you're going to test goes with £100 and want to buy £200 worth of shopping, you ain't going to do it. And the situation is starting to look that way with the new cemetery, I'm afraid. Annette?
Sorry, again. I filled in the survey of the... Tom, it was a devolution, West Suffolk.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there's a lot of money there. Now, if that does happen, we expect to see some of that money here in Brandon.
That is a large lump of money over several years, but it's for the whole of Suffolk.
Right.
So by the time it filters down to Brandon Town, it'll be pennies, not pounds. So it's a false horizon, that one, I'm afraid to say. And of course, and I'm sure councillor LeCannick would comment on the devolution far more knowledgeably than I do, but perhaps you'd like to say something about it, but it's far from a done deal with the devolution.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, chairman. We... It's all pretty fluid at the moment, and there's nothing come out which is definite. But it's a long process. But once it starts forming shape, then we'll let you know. But we've been promised £16 million, and that's for the whole of Suffolk. So as the chairman alluded to, if you spread that out, that might not be too much. But put it this way, Annette, if we are entitled to some money, we will go after it. I can assure you of that. We will go after it if we're entitled to it. Thank you, Mr Chair.
I just...
Yeah, yeah.
And just thank you to everyone who worked really hard for the defibrillator at Manor House Close. It's really done well. Church Close, Quinter Road, the surrounding areas, everybody is over the moon that that is there. So thank you very much to all those that really worked hard to get that for the subject.
Yeah, I agree. Councillor Ridgewell?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I've got a few sort of things. As that gentleman quite rightly said, we say these things and nothing seems to get done. Now, I mentioned last year about the Remembrance Playing Field speed bumps. And they are too high. We are now converting that building into a mini hospital. Don't care what anybody says, it is. It's no two ways about it.
Well, sorry, Peter, oh, you've lost me. Which building?
The Remembrance Playing Field, Chibbles, the leisure centre.
Oh, right, the leisure centre, yeah.
Yeah, the speed bumps next to the tennis courts. You know, whoever's going to be on the Remembrance Playing Fields committee, perhaps you could get them to sort, just reduce the height. That is ever so high. When you're not well, going over those speed bumps.
Yeah.
It is terrible. I can assure you, it really is.
Well, I'm hopeful to attend the AGM of the Remembrance Playing Field, and Nicky will, so if you made the notes, Nicky, and we were raised out there.
Right, I've got a couple of things.
Yeah, carry on.
You've got a few minutes, you know. I have said this for several years. The Berry Road traffic, four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon, is murder. Now, I had made a suggestion when I was at district about this, that you make the section from George Street to Berry Road to Thetford Road one way. So the traffic that wants Thetford Road and also the High Street can use the right-hand side of the road, which is outside the telephone exchange. And then the left-hand side can be used for London Road. At the moment, the way things go, the traffic is just all one lane, and most of it all wants the High Street. Nothing moves in London Road. So my proposal is that the traffic, one way from George Street to Thetford Road in Berry Road is one way. All the traffic goes along Thetford Road, past Astor Call, past Bob's Fish Shop, Bellas Now, around the island, past the fire station, then turns left to go up to Berry Road, that way. The lorries are ever so long, really, really long. And anybody who's parked at that junction is at a risk of having their front bumper taken off. These lorries are ever so big. You mentioned about the lorries on coming down the High Street from the cement workplace. Well, I keep seeing them all the time down the High Street. Now, I was in the High Street last week.
Can I just clarify? You said the cement workplace.
Well, you know, they make all the... ...libre side.
Yeah, well, they're different, they're different, Peter. The ones I refer...
The whole Brooks and the whole Brooks.
The ones I'm referring to...
I see the whole Brooks lorries coming down the High Street.
The ones I am referring to are purely from the station yard and to the station yard. And I have noticed a huge reduction in them, and I'm sure everybody else has too. There is still one or two coming through, but they might not be going to the yard.
Yeah.
The station yard. So that is a major, major advantage to Brandon that has been negotiated with Norfolk. Now, what I suggest with your rearrangement of the road here, what you will need is a traffic regulation order to be able to do it. You will need some of the finance to be able to do it, which would be Suffolk highways. And Suffolk highways are the ones to get on to. As it's your project, what I might suggest is, if you've got with one of the other councillors who is au fait with computers, and they could assist you in getting your plans off to Suffolk highways, and then you will see what they come back with.
It'll be put on the...
Well, you know it, I know it, but at least you have tried. At least you have tried.
But one bit would help, as I'm always waiting. And Paul did mention this a couple of months back. Why don't they take three foot off the pavement that's outside the Flit House?
Because they probably don't know about your scheme or any of it. This is why I'm saying, if you've got with, say, Paul, he's au fait with computers, aren't you? Well, somebody around here must be.
And I mentioned it, I mentioned it, you know. I can't see it happening because it's going to cost a fortune, and we really need the bypass. We need the bypass, instead of all this pussyfooting a bit here and a bit there.
Again, yeah, but where's the money for that better come from?
The money's coming from this HS2.
No, no, you showed me, you showed me. That's government hot air. You know it, I know it.
The money has been allocated to improve roads and rail and bus transport.
That's what they say, but where is the money? We're still waiting on finance to go ahead with the... This is from my Transport East Ham. The Hawley and Ely rail networks within there, and we're waiting on that to go ahead because it's already been approved. They're saying all the money's coming from the high-speed train that's been cancelled. But where's the money? Where is it? It's just political talk prior to an election, which will happen sometime this year, no doubt. But certainly on your scheme over here, I see no reason why you shouldn't get it off. Get somebody to help you, get it into an email, get it drawn out, fully explained and send it off to Suffolk highways.
When I was at Mildenhall, did all that.
And on that subject of that traffic buildup, if you're coming up the High Street, I want to go right. The amount of people that actually jumped that light.
Oh, yes.
Is handout of what? There's at least four people, people that just jammed all the back up of the High Street. Same as we done, there's no road margins there or nothing.
No, I've nearly run over there myself several times by people jumping those red lights. But that is a decision I have to make.
Well, I was in the High Street, well, I'm in the High Street virtually every day, but I had to wait in the car. And I should have counted earlier, but at 9:25 to 9:30, 126 vehicles passed through
Yes.
in the High Street.
Yes.
126, that's a lot. That's a lot in five minutes.
99.9% of them are all through traffic. If they followed the road signs at Mildenhall, Five Ways or at...
Well, you've got a lot of Aldis traffic as well, you've got a lot of Aldis. But anyway, I just mentioned that. Another thing that I'd like to see, the yellow lines on the west side in Berry Road outside the doctors, removed because that's be easier for people to visit the doctors in Berry Road as well as this new dentist as well as getting their prescriptions. And also to remove the yellow lines outside Tilly's Five Bells on the north side. The reason you had these yellow lines was when it was a through road between George Street and the Old Berry Road.
That's right.
And also to remove the...
Just can we have one at a time, please?
And also to remove the yellow lines, the north side of Load Street, which is the little bit where the garages are opposite Aldis Supermarket. Once again, that used to be a through road from Load Street into the High Street. I don't suppose anybody can remember that, but it was, it was a through road. And that's the reason they put yellow lines in outside Five Bells and outside in Load Street.
And I hate to shoot that down again, but to do that, you need a traffic regulation order in place. You then need Suffolk highways to do it. Money. A traffic regulation order will cost you about £16,000. That's even before you start.
And as these gentlemen rightly said, we say all these things, but nothing's going to ever sit up.
Well, no, I mean, hopefully you can vent your spleens and get it off your chest. But the reality is that the country is in a financial state that I've never known it in. It's dire, and there is no money in government, certainly local government, for anything. I mean, one little unknown fact that I'll put in just before we come to this section of the meeting is the West Suffolk Council, through annual revenue partnerships, raised about £150, £160 million in that order, isn't it, Victor? Yeah?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah? That all goes to central government. They then dish back out £16 million of that to the West Suffolk District Council. So when people say to me, I pay my council tax, yeah, well, we don't get it in the council. Or £16 million doesn't pay for the dumpsters to come and take the bins, empty the bins. So that puts it into some sort of perspective. We do not get money from central government. West Suffolk Council will have a balanced budget for this year, next year, but go into deficit net of the third year by about £5 million. And the only reason it is doing so well is because we've been fruitful. We have been raising money wherever we can, and our business ventures have profited. It's certainly not coming from council tax, I can assure you. So...
But we pay a lot, we pay a lot.
Again, you do pay a lot. I pay a lot, everybody pays a lot. But what you need to be doing is saying to your prospective MVs, all of them, because we don't know at this stage who will get elected then, what are you going to do about this big funding gap for local councils?
Yeah, I'll just add one more.
Who?
I'll pay my tax, I haven't had no spot on town, have I?
Is there any... Do you know, I'll just add one more.
Very quick, because there's somebody else.
Of having a bus shelter in Green Road where Lee Heath track is on the south side. Because that's well open to all the elements, summer, winter, whatever season. And it would be nice if there was a bus shelter at that particular point.
Well, we can look at that, yeah, that you can bring back to the town council as a proposition, as an agenda item. Was there anybody else in the public gallery, please, that would wish to speak, souvenir?
Yes, I would. I've just been looking at the minutes of...
Yes, I would. Um, I've just been looking at the minutes of the last meeting and it says, Council Brocklehurst offered to step away from the planning committee. I just wanted to look at.
Sorry? That, that would be a question for the next meeting at seven o'clock. Sorry.
Sorry, I don't know whether it's part of the public or what.
No, we have the public, public gallery in the, uh, next meeting as well.
Before you vote for the chairman, that's why I asked that question. Possible chairmen, if you're, or vice chairman.
Well, as I say, that, that will come in public, uh, uh, forum in, in the next bit of the meeting, if you like. So, nobody else?
Also my part in public forum, because the course of the time is coming.
Thank you very much. So at this point, I close. At seven o'clock, just gone, the annual town meeting for the elected of Brandon. Thank you very much, all of you, for your participation. Would anybody like a comfort break? No? No, well, I would. I'm gonna take my jacket off.
That's okay.
Did we ever open any windows, chairman? Right. That feels a bit. We've got not a lot. A little bit, but not a lot of that. Good evening and welcome to Brandon Town Council. Uh, annual general meeting being held here on Monday, the thirteenth of May. At seven P M. in the year of two thousand and twenty-four. Number one on the agenda is election of chairman and acceptance of office. Do I have any? Do I have any proposals?
I'd like to propose Penny Everington to be chairman.
Is that seconded by Bob? Any others?
I'll propose councillor Witten.
I seconded.
Thank you. Any others? No, no. Okay, we will go for a vote. I will take a vote by a show of hands for councillor Everington as chair. Are those against? Goes abstain? Right, I will take a show of hands for those in favour of councillor Witten. Those against? Those abstain?
Councillor Witten.
Sir? Right, done. Well, thank you very much.
What, what is the result, chairman? We haven't heard anything down this end.
Yeah.
The result is councillor Witten with nine for.
In favour?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Election of vice chairman and acceptance of office. By the way, I didn't, didn't say whether I accepted the office. But I'm there. Sorry?
You can have a choice.
No, no. Election of vice chair and acceptance of office. Do I have any proposals for vice chair, please?
I'd like to propose, um, Mr Brocklehurst.
Is that seconded?
June.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In light of all that's gone on this past year with breaking confidentiality, breaking standing orders and financial regs, does councillor Brocklehurst feel he's qualified to hold that position?
Um, I feel it's a position that I would still be learning, um, and I would put it into the hands of my fellow councillors, whether they felt that I could continue, um. But I don't know if there's anybody else that wishes to stand, um, and that would.
I will offer.
Proposer and seconded? Bob and councillor Palmer. Right, so can we have a show of hands for councillor Brocklehurst, please, in favour? Those against? Abstentions? Um, a show of hands for those in favour of councillor Everington? Those against? Abstentions?
Okay, so, uh, councillor Brocklehurst with seven for. Councillor Brocklehurst, seven for. In favour, yes, for, for the majority, number one.
Sir, I'm sort of scared of him. You don't want to play him.
Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, as a, as a county councillor for Brandon and a deputy leader of West Suffolk Council, I've just seen Gary Brocklehurst elected as vice chair for Brandon Town Council through a democratic vote. I support Gary Brocklehurst one hundred percent. He works tirelessly for this town. Every weekend you'll see him out there watering the grass, cutting the grass, doing this, doing that, doing the other. We need more people like that, not less people. I am a hundred and ten percent behind you, Gary, and I would like you to take this post here and now.
Yeah. Um, thank you for that, councillor Penny. Um, in light of what's been said in the public section there, and I do apologize for the members of the public at the back who didn't hear what I was asking the chairman. I was just seeking the chairman's advice as a colleague and a friend as to a little bit of advice on how we felt I should, um, respond to the nomination, um. And I feel that to try and, um, learn the role a little bit more, that I will pass this year and hopefully that next year, um, hopefully I will learn a little bit more. It won't, uh, mean I do any lesson around the town. Um, I'll try doing what I do. I have learnt an awful lot these last few months, um, in put, trying to push things along, um. But if it's, if it's upsetting to, to a number of people and I do accept that I'm a little bit headstrong, then I will bow. Um, and I think that councillor Everington, we've had in four votes from the, from the members of the council, is, is a good choice.
Can I just say that if you read standing orders and financial regulations for a start, it would help. And if you abide by the Cobra Conduct and you don't break confidentiality, not only break confidentiality, but about our staff and in front of them, and that is unforgivable. That is certainly not the sort of person that should be a councillor.
Okay, uh, can I respond to that?
You can.
Um, in regards to breaking confidentiality, this has been re, been there for so long now, um, and I know it's gone other places. And I've never, ever responded to it. I actually went to one of our members of staff who was extremely distraught by being given incorrect information about a pay rise from the town clerk at the time. She had the thought, we've given the full information and it was wrong. And she'd sat there in the office upset for a week when I tried to put the lady's mind at rest. Now, if that's a breach of confidentiality of what went on in this meeting, I feel it had already happened with the town clerk going and telling her those things and acting as a human being and trying to respect somebody else's feelings. If that's a breach of confidence, then I'll do it again.
That's my point. I'm sorry, I, I, I think, I think.
The confidence had already been broken.
It's not just that.
The confidence had already been broken.
You had, but that's not down to you.
I'm going to interject there because this is, uh, getting us nowhere.
It's a personality thing. It's a personality thing.
No, I understand.
From the vice chairman or the prospective new vice chairman and from the town clerk at the time, who was also extremely rude at the King's Proclamation and told me, virtually told me, don't do one. Like it was a piece of something on the shoe. Again, never, ever brought up. But I was an official representative of the British Legion on that day. We was following instructions from the Lord Lieutenant. So, you know, so many things that I do and I'm told I shouldn't be doing. You know, these bits of paper comes through. I have apologized. I've made an apology in this, in this session.
And I haven't brought it up again since.
Gary, Gary, I think you should take the vice chair. You've been elected democratically, right?
And.
And I mean that, Gary.
I resign. And can I suggest, if anyone wants to, anyone wants to take place, call an election because otherwise our coercive controller will not allow co-option.
So is that a resignation?
Yes.
Could you make a record of that?
Until you get it in writing.
Could you make a record of that?
Until you get it in writing.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, Penny. I really am.
I, I, I will not work with the likes of.
Gary.
The new vice chairman because he has been so wrong and he's misled new members of the, uh, council as well. And he should know better.
I don't think it's going to help by you going because I don't think how it could be resolved.
I've got better things to do than do battle with this one. And why have we gone in this last year nowhere? Absolutely right.
I'm just gonna take the chair.
You don't get anywhere.
Get hold of the meeting.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to speak up because with respect to everyone, this chairman election and indeed vice chair election has been a mishmash for weeks, as you fully well know, chairman, don't you? Because change of minds inviting other people to be your, um, vice chairman.
I'm saying it, other people.
Absolutely. And the thing is, if you're gonna make your feeling strong enough, and I'm gonna say it, chairman, whether you like it or not, that you did not want Gary as vice chair, and I'm not the only person to hear it. You fully well know, you made a phone call to Penny and asked her to be your vice chair. And this is how we've arrived how we have. I've always said, if it's not broken, don't fix it. They were my thoughts.
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, you've got to take away to this, chairman. You, you, you absolutely upset the apple cart. So I'm sorry, well, I'm not sorry. It was all, this has all been born of your actions and what you've said to people. And certainly, I'm, we wouldn't have lost Penny had this not have happened. Uh, 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 she would still be sitting there. So I, I'm done now. I've said it and, and that is how I feel. I know there's no untruths in it. Because I've been the receiver from your mouth.
Yeah.
And others. And, um, so no denials there at all. And like I said, this is.
Well, I will answer you when you stop.
Yeah, well, I don't very often speak, so I'm an older magnet all the way up.
Absolutely, fully. I approached Penny Everington, in fact, to find out whether she would be willing to chair, uh, deputy chair under my chairmanship, and she said, yes, she would. And I also mentioned to you that I felt that Gary probably wouldn't be able to chair, given some of the things that had happened.
Yeah.
All right? Which is why I have sat in this meeting and voted, but not proposed, not seconded, not done anything. I took a completely neutral stance because of the situation.
I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, in, in response again, you were gonna be chair, then you weren't gonna be chair, then you had too much on at West Suffolk, so we were all in this. One that, that changed by the bloody day. You know, I didn't know where I stood. I was getting phone calls to say you were, then you weren't, then, then you didn't want Gary, then you wanted Penny. I mean, a mishmash, all in the space of about le, less than a month, I'd say. So, I mean, as far as voting.
Well, I'm, I'm sure there's been an awful lot of discussion between colleagues about who would and who wouldn't. And yes, I have switched between wanting and not wanting.
So I mean.
Because of personal reasons. But here I am, and I am now elected chair.
That's fair dues. That is fair dues. And like this is right.
You cannot accuse me of trying to influence this meeting in any way, shape or form because I have.
I'm categorically not doing that, um, chairman, at all. But what I am, am saying is, you know, I said from the beginning, if it's not broken, don't fix it.
No. So we have a situation now where we have a, have a chair and we have a deputy chair, who I still do. Sorry. I haven't accepted. Sorry, if anybody was there, you couldn't hear. I just said to the chairman, I haven't accepted. So I need, and to be able to move the meeting on, I now need to know whether you are chair or not.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, sorry, yeah, right.
What was, what did the vote say? Right.
Yeah.
So we've, we've elected you.
You're elected.
Yes or no? Because it's pointless going, he did this, she did that, it all happened here and all that. Let's go from that.
I know, I know.
Because all what you've been talking about and talking with this and that, none of us know anything about that.
No, I think now you have a right to know about it. Yeah, but we have, it's been, but, you know, it's, it's been an absolute nightmare behind the scenes, um, June, I'll, I'll say.
Only, only with yourself. I mean, I've not spoken to other people about it.
Person's not here to actually say who you'd spoken to about it, is she? Because she just left the ring.
Well, other than Penny.
But, you know, I mean, I think the general, um, opinion was before you threw your toys out of the frame, it was a foregone question, it would be.
Can I have a seat on the table, please?
With what we've had for the past year.
Any other resign yet?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is there anybody else that would take the vice chairman's roles?
Mr Brocklehurst, with all due respect, I'm councillor Brocklehurst, at this moment of time, Penny has not resigned, as said, as and when it's in writing.
No, we, we take that as a resignation.
No, you do not.
Take the vice chair.
What was the point of that? I'm really, really torn here because of what's been said by the members of the public, and I know I've done wrong. I know I've done wrong. I know I've been really quick in trying to do things. Um, I, I've just put two things here and they're completely different from each other. The cemetery's been going on for donkey's years and we're no further forward. Councillor Gorrance brought a resolution and he asked me to help him with the defibrillators and we cracked on and gone and done. I know they're a million miles apart financial wise. But I don't wanna sit here and I don't wanna sit here like councillor.
but I don't wanna sit here, and I don't wanna sit here like Councilor Richard, I said earlier on tonight, and the gentleman who's left, that we just sit here and we talk about things and we don't do anything. The whole point in sitting here is to try and do stuff. Paul and myself, we've now got two defibrillators fitted. Councillor Pennell and myself have got, we've- we've achieved two things with coach services. We can't quite release the information yet, but it's gonna be really good for the town. But we've got, and I'm not saying nobody else is doing anything, but we've got the backside, so we've just gone ahead and done it. And we haven't sat here and asked for these people's permission. If that's wrong, if that is so wrong, then I shouldn't be your vice chairman. But when you think what I've done is right and take the stuff that I've done wrong, and I've had a smack on the hand off Phil, then I'll- I'll take the vice's chair, but it, you know, it's down to you guys. I want, I need your support.
As far as I'm concerned, if we're going to talk about the defibrillators, you went the wrong way round the mob with us on so many occasions. For example, who appointed the contractor to install them?
Chairman?
Yeah, we don't digress.
No, you don't digress.
Chairman, could I-
Yes, we do. I want an answer.
Could I, for the final time, mention my backing for Gary Brocklehurst? He has worked tirelessly and I'm gonna thank him and thank Paul Goringa for putting those defibrillators in and working hard and got them in in no time at all. And he's absolutely right. He's a man of policies and projects and they're the sort of people we want on this town council, who roll their sleeves up and get stuff done. If we lose people like him, we are on a slippery slope. And I wish, Gary, you've got Mike's support 100%. And I'll be disappointed, you've just been elected democratically to be vice chair of Brandon Town Council.
Right, well, just as a footnote to that, I will read out what I said earlier in the town meeting. I wish to thank Councillor Brocklehurst for his admirable support to me throughout the past year through his role of deputy chair, also for his stepping in to company and city duties and bloody blah. So, I certainly don't have a problem working with Councillor Brocklehurst.
Mr Chairman, I'm still waiting on answer.
I did.
What gives you the right to do that? Not exactly. The only person that can do that is Donna Allen with a resolution. We've already had Donna Allen being set up over these defibrillators when your other- Yes, your other partner demanded she ordered two defibrillators with no resolution. That could have cost that girl her job.
Can I answer that one?
Yes, sure.
There was no demand. I asked her if it was possible to do so, she said without contacting the chair, she couldn't. That was the total outcome of that conversation.
It gets distorted by the-
I'm telling you, that's what was said.
That's fine. But that, when it didn't go right in the office, our vice chairman lost his temper.
Pardon?
You gave Donna Allen a mouthful.
Can I ask where that information come from?
Donna Allen.
Now then, Mr Chairman, I think we should be cour- we should be having a confidential meeting. With- with that particular member of staff and Councillor Rabs, please.
No, I won't be here.
Well, you- you've just said something that did not happen, didn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. Right, we're going nowhere, we're just arguing across the table. You're not taking the vice chair.
What was the point of that?
Nominate me as last year.
Yes, yes.
Right, so what-
Can- can the public, Gary, you will all have a chance, Dom, to speak-
Oh, sorry, am I stepping in front of someone?
No, no, you're not, because it's not the public, the- 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 the the, uh, public forum is agenda item 10 and we're on agenda item 2. So, if- if you can hold fast for eight more agenda items, you can then have your say.
George.
Right. Now, I'm- I'm gonna get to, just give me a chance. So what I said earlier, I highlighted how I was feeling, um, you know, it doesn't do your confidence a lot of good if you've got somebody changing their mind from day to day and not having confidence in your- your- your vice chair. So that, get the old cogs gun for a start. Now, prior to you asking Penny, um, I think conversations with yourself, I, you will recall, and, um, Councillor McCannick will recall, when we were coming back from West Suffolk, um, this was prior to all the mind changing, um, we had a little conversation about when you said you'd- you'd sit the chair again, you'd be happy with Gary as vice chair, and, you know, like I said, my- my terminology of that was, it's getting better and if it's not broken, why fix it? Now, moving swiftly forward, I'm not retracting what I said because I think it needed to be said because I put- I put my mind on a whirl about, does he really wanna do it? Does he really want Gary? Does he, uh, anyway? We've arrived here and now, and Gary, you've been voted in. Now, like I said, i- i- if it, again, if it's not broken, why fix it? It was working until you had a little playground argument over something which upset the apple cart. But it was basically all it amounts to. So, at the end of the day, if you got the votes, Gary, nobody's criticizing you for, you know, you have done a lot. Well, I'd say, nobody's criticizing you, of course they have criticized and it's just gone a bit overboard.
And I think at the end of the day, Gary has taken on board, as he said, he had a severe admonishment from myself on a couple of occasions.
Well, if things like that had been ironed out-
And I would put that in the past now, and as a learning curve. And nobody, nobody in this room can put their hand up and say they are perfect all of the time.
Nobody can say that, ever.
Well, accept me if you must.
But, but at the, but the end of the day, m- I- I don't wanna be the vice chair, I don't know whether anybody else would be vice chair around here.
Well, oh, oh, oh-
I change what's good at the moment, I change it. You've already said it, that it's working.
Well, exactly.
Yes, so we're changing.
Right, okay, so what I'm gonna suggest as chair is Gary thinks about it, he sits there for now, um, and we move the meeting on, otherwise we will be here until midnight.
No, 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 no.
Okay, well, I'll- I'll nominate myself as vice chair if I can get a second.
All right, so, okay, okay, you went through the democratic process. Gary was elected, right? There was somebody, and he wouldn't accept his position at the moment. Penny was the second one, she got four votes, I think. Uh, so she is not officially resigned, as you put it in writing, so she should be taking that place if Gary doesn't want her. Gary's got, what, Gary, Gary, Gary-
Absolutely.
Gary's got to accept it, okay, if he won't accept it, then we've got to move on to the second one.
Can I ask what the vote was, please, for Gary?
Seven.
Seven, four.
Seven, seven, that's right. Well, do you know what, do you know? Well, if- if Gary didn't want the job, why, why have you nominated yourself?
I didn't nominate myself, I did.
Oh, big problem, sorry. But then, if Paul was nominating you, why didn't you sort of say, no, you didn't wanna take the job?
That- that wasn't asked. It- it literally, that didn't come through in there, it was, it's a proposal, it's a second, and then the vote went ahead. At no point was I able to interject into the meeting.
But seven councillors have voted for you, so, to my mind, you should accept what the councillors have voted for.
Thank- thank you for that, Peter. And to be perfectly frank with that, there's only been a couple that have- that are saying do it. Um, so, that- that's where I'm, you know, I think I just heard Councillor Rabs say I'm not the man for the job.
Well, you had seven votes, Gary.
Yeah.
You had seven votes.
Mr Chairman, if I may-
Yes, June.
Gary, you've held the position for a while. If we'd have thought you were useless, we'd have had a go at you before that, it would have chucked you off. We'd have voted you out. That would have been it. Well, we haven't. We've worked with you all the time you've been the vice chair. You've done lots of things, as we all know. And just because someone has heard something behind a tittle-tattle, you're the one that is now suffering. We want you back, that is why we have voted.
Well said, June.
So please, Gary, support your councillors that are supporting you. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you.
Don't upset me, my boy, so, not a pretty sight when roused.
Yes, I'll ta- I'll take vice chair as well then.
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, I resign.
It's two resignations, Jamie, tonight.
When you get it in writing. Shut Victor up.
Well, if you're gonna say it, Bob, you mean it.
I bloody do.
You know, don't, don't, don't hop in and out, out, depending-
I know, you do.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry to see you take that decision, Bob.
I'm not.
It is what it is, right, we now move on to agenda item number three, which is apologies for such absence and approval of reasons tendered, that's Malcolm Pennell. Um, and is it all shut down?
We're going downstairs.
Sorry?
We're going down.
Come, yeah, okay, good. Um, number four, declarations of interest and additions to members' register of interest. I'm sure everybody will have signed the book. If they have an interest in any of the subjects that come up, please tell us before, immediately before that subject. To receive a report from RAF Leyton Heath, there's a written one, isn't there? Is there not? They didn't tell me that they were gonna try and get one over. Can- can we stop talking between the groups, please? You will get your chance to s- speak in the public forum, as I've already said, but can we conduct- Sorry?
No, I couldn't, they're all used to talking.
Yeah, well, they need to be quiet, they need to be quiet. Please. You will get your chance. Now, yeah. When I was at RAF, uh, Mildenhall, they did, the- the Anson did say that they'd send a written, but they haven't won, so we have nothing from RAF Leyton Heath. To receive confirm and sign the minutes of the Brandon Town Council meeting on Monday the 8th of April 2024. Do I have a proposal, thank you, Senator, Councillor, uh, uh, Goring? Any comments on them? No, can we go for a vote on that, please? The minutes are accepted, thank you. Uh, number seven, matters arising from information exchange only of the full council meeting of April 24th, 10th. Um, I have nothing and I don't think, Peter.
Well, number four. Um, regarding myself and my help, the lady in question, she sent me a lovely letter of apology. I don't know what was actually said because I wasn't here at the meeting, but she sent a lovely letter.
Did you say five?
Pardon?
On this one. One minute to the last meeting. Yeah, carry on, Peter.
That's all, she- she sent me a lovely letter of apology.
And- and there was a very good vocal and verbal apology in- in- in the council meeting as well, so when it was very, I can- I can understand that situation, but as far as we are concerned, I'm assured everybody is concerned, it's out history and gone. Thank you. Um, urgent business, well, nobody's come to me 48 hours prior to this meeting and I have nothing, so we'll move on to nine, which is to receive the written report from the town clerk. It's in your packs, we've received it, enjoy it at some point if you haven't already read it. Number 10, the public forum. Monthly event, limited to three minutes duration, maximum per resident, and I would add in there, if it's already been discussed in the room, can we just, because I'm very conscious of the time. Thank you. Um, uh, so I will start with reports from county, district and town councillors and community groups, starting with county, Councillor McCannick.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman, and I would like to just congratulate you on your election tonight for the next 12 months.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to congratulate Gary Brocklehurst, Councillor Barry Brocklehurst, for vice chair to continue for the next 12 months. I'm just briefly gonna expand on the HGV restriction which has been imposed on the operator at the station. Uh, the operator, at the Norfolk County Council Planning Committee meeting, uh, where I was present, the chairman was present and Wayne Land was present, the operator informed the committee that there was 189,000 tonnes of aggregate leaving that railhead and coming through the High Street. Uh, Suffolk County Council, with the permission of Norfolk County Council, put in a sophisticated camera mechanism down there and low and behold, it was established that 459,000 tonnes of aggregate was coming through there, which is quite a substantial, substantial amount more than what was specifically said by the operators. Uh, and it's for that reason Norfolk County Council wisely put a ban, an HGV ban in place. Basically what it is now, laden trucks leaving the station cannot turn left and come down our High Street. It's not a complete ban, but let's face it, we've all got to admit, that's a good start, isn't it? That's a good stepping stone for something a little bit more, uh, something more substantial. That's an important first step. And as a councillor, as the chairman alluded to earlier on, we've got the added bonus that they- that they've stipulated that the operator down there must have a wheel wash. There is no wheel wash facility down there. There is a rumour going round down that there is a wheel, there is no wheel wash down there. They admitted at the planning committee meeting, there's no wheel wash down there. And that has to be put in place. That might, it should lessen the filth, the filth and the dust in the station and it should lessen the filth and the dust in the High Street. That concludes my report, Jim, I'm willing to take questions.
Thank you, any questions for the county council?
Yes, I had one.
Yes, carry on.
Okay, explain not a complete ban.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't allow, it doesn't stop Jack Richardson Fakerman coming down. It doesn't stop David Turner from Fornham coming through the town because that ban is a specific ban. But listen, you make no mistake about it, ladies and gentlemen, we're working on the next step. I hope that answers your question, councillor.
No, it doesn't, it's not, there's a complete, there's not a complete ban except for Rory Holbrook, is that right?
Well, I haven't mentioned that name, they're- they're not my words, Jackie. They're- they're his words, they're his words, they're not my words.
You've said everybody else's name by him.
What are you talking about? Just be a little bit more specific, I've said everybody else's name.
You- you were talking about a specific thing that was talked about on Norfolk County Council, right? About that Rory Holbrook's business, okay? And you said not a complete ban, so I'm asking you to explain.
Can I clarify for you, please? Right. Vehicles entering the railway site and leaving it are not allowed through Brandon High Street. Therefore, it is not a complete ban on all HGV traffic through Brandon, but a specific section of it, which everybody will admit is not a very pleasant thing to have. All that weight of- 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 of aggregate coming through our High Street using the Brandon Road and Thexford Road, which they no longer can because they are not allowed to come through Brandon.
So who's that?
Stop waving at me, I'll- I'll come to you in a minute, thank you, Councillor McCannick. We are still working on a complete HGV ban through Brandon, but this has been a very good step towards it. It also sets a precedent because it shows- highways, that there are alternative routes, which were the main route, don't forget, up to, up to Munford, to Thetford, and then on to the A eleven. That was the approved route when the A eleven was, uh, due. If you look at the road signs, both at Barton Mills and the Munford End, you will see that that is the approved route for traffic, not through Brandon High Street.
So can I just add to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so Mr Holbrook's business, where the, where the traffic comes off the railway, the aggregate goes to RAF Lakenheath, whereas used to RAF Lakenheath. Okay, so you're now just sending him to Munford Village?
No. Then comes to the roundabout, which is an A road. To it. It's at the head of the village, it's not in the village, so don't, so we're trying to pretend that it is.
Munford starts about half a mile from that roundabout. Okay, okay, Munford Village, then it goes on five roundabouts. Okay, and doubles back on the A ten sixty-five to get to just, his, his depot just past the Warden Gun Club.
Yeah.
Okay, thirty-odd miles more on a round trip.
Yeah.
So about thirty litres of fuel more.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you've done?
Yes.
Good. As long as the public knows.
Because that is how you stop the traffic coming through Brandon High Street. Councillor McCannick.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think councillor Palmer has missed the point, which is disappointing considering he had several years on planning. This condition was attached to a planning application. That's the point. That was attached to a planning application. The planning application was allowed for the second siding on the condition that the cars, the trucks don't come through the town. It's as simple as that, and I think councillor Palmer's missed the point, and he might be slightly envious because he hasn't been able to implement the HGV ban instead others have. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I, I, I would also say too that there was such a condition on the concrete works, uh, which is in the Norfolk side, which is all, or more. Um, that was imposed in a similar fashion years ago by Breckland Council. Breckland Council are now, in the light of what's happened, looking at enforcing that as well, so that would have stopped. The, I mean, everybody saw the big truck come through and all the concrete slabs fall off and cause mayhem in our town. We were lucky nobody was killed there, and we don't want these vehicles coming through our High Street, so if they have to use a little bit more fuel to be a little bit more friendly to the neighbourhood in which they will operate, then I'm sorry, that has to be. I can't see any of these aggregate or concrete manufacturer's bosses actually wincing too much. They're all multimillionaires.
So they can go through hot bombs, whatever, what you're calling it, instead?
I got, I'll have councillor McCannick.
I will, I will give, for the final time, I will give councillor Palmer a little bit more detail. The company, the operators down at the aggregate facility there, they've got thirty days to present an HGV route which is acceptable to the planning committee. So we're halfway through that period. They can't wriggle out of that. That'll be attached to the planning condition. They have to, they have to produce a route what the planning committee will accept. I don't underestimate what we've managed to do, because a lot of people said you'll never get any sort of HGV ban in it. Well, we have. And those critics have, have got to read their words. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to district and town councillors. I have nothing good to say. Um, so, uh, community group representatives, anybody? No? Okay, I'll throw it open to the public. Anybody wish to speak?
Um, this is, this is just an idea that I'd like to put before the council. Um, there is, I have to say mostly ladies of my age of being saying how much they would like to shop at the factory shop, but they can't, and I said, sorry, but why can't you? Because they can't get there. They don't drive, or they don't drive anymore, and the bus, which is a jolly, our bus route is a jolly good route, but it stops at Teskes and then goes round into Crown Street, and they would have to walk that bit to the factory shop, and they can't do it. It's too much for them. And I think maybe there's a possibility that the coach company could put just a request stop up by O'Mahams and the factory shop, but I wouldn't know how to go about it quite honestly.
Councillor, see?
Have your friends, sorry, have your friends contacted the community bus front line?
I don't think anything.
The community bus is also.
How the, how would, uh, just an ordinary person?
It, it runs for everybody. It's literally like a taxi, but it's a bus. It's a very small contribution, and they take people to the gyms and to the shops and everywhere, but I can provide you with the information from my house information at work. Um, but they're, they're desperate, because obviously if they're not used, they lose funding, so they're desperate for people to use them. So the community bus is probably the best idea, but I'm happy to pass information on to you.
Except that I would hate to have to ring, you know, a book about, maybe if you're desperate enough, but when, you know, people are out and about and just casually shopping, they just want to be able to, you know, the bus route is, we get, I think we've got really good bus routes, actually. They're able to get on a bus, get off at the other end, shop, and get on the next bus round, you know, for the rest of the morning out for them.
What I would suggest, I'll come to councillor McCannick in a moment. Uh, what I would suggest is that we let councillor Brocklehurst and councillor Pennell, because they are currently working with bus company.
Something, but I know you've got to talk about.
Um, and that's a very good idea.
Is it, is it a possibility?
Yeah, everything's a possibility if we try.
I just thought it was a question.
Yeah, I'll, very quickly, and then I'll go. Chris, would it work if? Chris?
Sorry?
Would it work if, if the bus that dropped them is the next one round an hour later?
Yeah, not if you're shopping, you know.
That, that would be okay, because I'm just thinking, when they go down, Chris, they come around the back, so it would be go up on one and then come back on the next one. Yeah, just so that we know when we go and speak to them. We'll have a word, yeah? Yeah.
And, and also I was talking to a group in Thetford, and I showed them something that I'd bought, and I said, oh, we'd love to go to the, the factory shop. I said, well, what could happen? We can't get there. You can go as far as Brandon, but you can't get to that end of the town.
That's a mis- I don't know what the word is there. It's according to the bus timetable, because the eighty-six, I did it myself the other week, I had to go to the hospital, and I went, oh, when I come back, I'm gonna have to get off at Green Road. But what it does, it shows, it gets to Green Road and terminates, but it doesn't show that it then continues on.
And it goes through the town.
Yeah, yeah, so it does follow that whole ramp, so Thetford could use it, yeah.
But I would thought just a request stop, what a proper ask.
I will mention it to them, yeah, right. Councillor McCannick, then, and councillor Ridgwell.
Uh, the, a couple of you made a good point. If it's coat services, if it's coat services, then councillor Pennell and councillor Brocklehurst are in communication with them over another scheme. So I think when he gets back from his journeys, he will liaise with councillor Brocklehurst, who's been most helpful on a consistent period. Um, they could, they could perhaps help, help the, uh, help the ladies who wish to shop at the factory shop.
Right. Anybody else in the public gathering? Sue? I'm sorry, sorry. Councillor, sorry, yeah, I did say.
There is a bus stop, the, the old Waiting Tires outside there. There's a bus stop there. And also there's the bus stop, uh, Sweden. You know, I know you can't have bus stops every few yards, but, uh.
Yeah.
You know. It would be nice if there was a bus stop for, uh, O'Mahs as well as the factory shop.
I'm, I'm sure councillor, uh, Pennell and councillor Brocklehurst will look into that. Yeah, lovely. Um, Sue, sorry, now it's your turn.
I was wondering, please, if you could tell me what are the chances of having a parish clerk or somebody who knows the rules and regulations of that conduct of councillors, and what training the councillors have had for their code of conduct, please?
Um, there certainly is every chance of us, well, hopefully, appointing a town clerk, provided when we do the interviews soon, that we find one suitable, so yes, there will be a town clerk. Um, what was the other bit about training?
Uh, um, when I was councillor, we had to do training, which included code of con- conduct, and then on, uh, condition of conduct.
And that is still in base.
And, and the councillors have all done that code of conduct, haven't they, that training?
No. Not, not all, because we haven't had a qualified person to do it. Mind you, we never did have a qualified person.
You did.
Not delivered.
It's delivered on that, that's all. It's one of the top, thank you.
Delivered externally, and the only councillor that's done it, councillor Boring and councillor Pennell.
Right. Did you hear that?
No, could you say?
Tell your shirt it, man.
The, the training is delivered externally.
Yes.
Um, and all the councillors have done it, except for our newer councillors, councillor Pennell and councillor Boring, and we are in the throes of arranging it. Currently, we're just waiting to confirm some dates.
Thank you. So they all should all know how to behave?
Through the chairs, please.
Through the code of conduct.
Have they called out the trainings?
Good, thank you.
Councillor Gorrin.
Yeah, I've heard notification, uh, my training.
Loud enough to let everybody know.
My training will start on a week today.
Lovely.
And councillor Pennell's doing the same.
Yeah, well, if you're starting a week, a week's time, so we'll be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Ridgwell.
Can I ask, councillor Ridgwell, you've just discussed about the, uh, Brandon railway sightings. There's another bit down here. There was a further discussion about the meeting that has been called about the station building and the future of it. I wonder if Victor would be able to enlighten us about the station building if you've got that meeting.
Well, yeah, carry on, big brother.
Apparently there was a meeting, and it was, uh, our MP was there. There was people from the Suffolk Preservation Society. I was not invited there, most of them were from Norfolk. Uh, and what they had decided, I'm not exactly sure. But there was a bill for four point two million pounds to resurrect the station, refurbish the station, and eight hundred thousand pound to do the inside, and where they get their prices from, I have no idea, but that's the latest update. If I hear anything more, it's a good question, councillor Ridgwell, if I hear anything more, I will let you know, but if you do win the lottery and you've got five or six million pound, we'll definitely give you the contract.
Could I ask, who was the MP?
I don't, I don't, no, it was our MP. It was our MP. It was our MP.
He's still a bar?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mention it.
Jump right to the sweet, right, right. Okay, is that happy now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Nobody more in the public gathering? Okay, I shall close that part of the meeting and move on to. Right. Okay. Yes, I see it now at the top of the page, correspondence. Um, there's an update on the decarbonation, decarbonisation initiatives fund. Um, did you want me to read it now, or are you happy with it in your packs? Right, uh, we will take it that you've seen the correspondence. Thank you. Um, item number twelve. Accounts to approve the payments for April twenty twenty four. Um, do I have a proposal? Thank you, Nicky. Uh, the secondary, thank you, John.
Question, chairman, for the clerk?
Yeah.
Uh, it's not a lot of money, but, um, forty-one pounds, sixty-seven pence for a belt sander, Jackie. Uh, belt sanders are normally for furniture or floors, uh. Why did we purchase a belt sander? Because we've never had a belt sander before.
Well, it, it's a good number. Fifty-one pound. Um, it was obviously required for.
For?
Something. It may actually have been to do with the, with the making of the signs to display our sponsorship. I've just seen.
Could you? Okay, when you get the opportunity, yeah.
I could have looked up and let you know.
If you can get back to me in a couple of days, that'd be brilliant, Jackie. Thank you.
Um, yeah, just a footnote on that. If you have queries in the accounts, you all have your packs qualified based prior to the meeting, please do contact the office. Um, and get it out of the way before the meeting. Thank you. Could I have your hands on that, please? Thank you very much. Good. Fourteen to note minutes, no, thirteen, to receive income and expenditure statement against budget for March twenty twenty four. Again, it's all in your packs, so we will take it, because you have received it. Uh, item number fourteen to note minutes of a planning committee meeting, it's in your packs, so we will note that. Uh, item number fifteen, review of delegation arrangements to committees, subcommittees, staff and other local authorities. Um, did you wanna comment on that?
Um, yeah, so, so, Donal, I have, because, you know, we've not done this before.
No.
We've been comparing our agenda to other councils' agendas, and we were wondering.
Is this not the same as agenda eighteen, fifteen and eighteen? Are they not the same thing?
Well, we, we weren't sure. We weren't sure. It's on the ATM yearly, but we couldn't recall what it meant or if it was required. Last year, we noted that from last year's minutes, the park informed that he would deal with South and Nowk and West Suffolk and then report back to the council, but that is what happens anyway, so we weren't sure, and we just put it on because it was on.
On, on, on.
Last year.
Right, okay, so we will skip over that one then and move on to review, the, the review of the terms of reference for committees. They're in the pack, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Any comments? No, we will accept them then.
One, one, two.
Oh, sorry, no, I didn't. Um, hold, sorry, you didn't poke me in the eye with it. Yeah. Um, I am saying paragraph seven in the terms of reference planning, um, is that a standard time, that twenty minutes there from, from model orders, or? Because I, with always, I think at meetings, we'd always say three minutes, but you can.
Yeah, in.
At discretion. It's normal.
That's probably just the standard time, and then it changes, or at the chairman's discretion.
Yeah. But twenty minutes is quite a. Quite a chunk, yeah. I would say three, three minutes, and then they can go a little longer at the chair. Yeah, I, I think I did that with, um, with the, with the recent one. Yes, yes. And, and just said, yes, please.
But it does say a maximum of twenty minutes, so if, I continue if I felt that, and they were just like, want it twenty minutes, they could have that.
At county level, it's not twenty minutes.
Is it?
So make a note on that, although amended is necessary. Um, other than that, no queries on the terms, so we'll accept them as they are, but they are not all set in stone. If, if something comes up in the course of business and doesn't work, then we can always bring it back to the table and make it work.
And we're still going to discuss the HR committee and support for committees.
Right. There.
Yeah, here, this is the one.
Oh, yeah, yours is printed differently to mine, isn't it? That's why I'm looking.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. One thing with the HR committee, um, uh, we don't really have a need for it anymore, because we now have the, um, professional company handling our HR. So I propose that we just let it die by the wayside. Is, is there any opposition to that proposal? No, no, it makes sense. We've, we're paying here, what, three thousand a year to have professionals do it. We don't need a committee, um, on that, so we'll get rid of. So we'll get rid of the human resources committee.
Can I have a question, Mr.
Yes.
The, the company that you've hired are going to give you recommendations on what you need to do to make sure you're compliant.
Yes.
Who's going to monitor that?
The whole council.
To, to make, it will come to council and it will be made sure that it's implemented.
It will be the whole council. Um, the revenue review committee, I propose we defer because the current chair is absent and we pick up on that in June. Yeah, June meeting. Um. We are looking for appointments, and I don't know who is east ward lighting, central ward lighting, um, west ward lighting. And that, but generally going around, if you see a street light out or a, a traffic light out, you report it. So.
I'll continue with west ward chairman, thank you.
Continue with west ward. When she was. Okay, so we'll backtrack to number seventeen in a minute. Central ward. Anybody want to take up?
Well, I'm already sort of, people have been in touch with me, I didn't know I was actually going to go and look for lights.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you, yeah, having to see them or somebody reports, then, then you would bring it up. Um, uh, east ward, George Ward, Paul.
No, in each, yeah.
Paul, yeah, Paul. Well, yeah, it's down there. Yes. Right, just go walking the streets at night.
And she does it anyway.
I'll jump back to, uh, Agenda item seventeen, which is a court councillors to community groups. And that's, remember, it's playing fields, and I think that's you, isn't it, Nicky?
I'd like to continue as well.
And you'd like to continue, job done. And South.
That's Jackie.
That's Jackie, yeah.
Oh, yeah, town clerk, and it was councillor Palmer last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stand on it as well, from what we do, yeah.
Yeah, well done, Dave, well done on that. Right, we then move on to the new cemetery working party as it is. I've said it on, uh, other, uh, another working party. I don't think we should be having working parties, particularly on something as important as the new cemetery. I think it should be a committee. I don't think there should be lay members on it because of its land, its finance and its contract. And, and it's confidential, so you cannot have lay members on it. So if nobody objects, we will change it from working party to committee. No objections.
So it's a committee here?
Sorry?
You've got one halfway up, cemetery council.
Well, it says working party on my bet and it wasn't working.
On the new cemetery, it does.
And the other one.
The new cemetery.
No, that's the.
And then you've got new cemetery.
Yeah, it's not the cemetery committee I'm talking about, it's the new cemetery.
Cemetery.
Uh, which will be a committee, the new cemetery. Right, um. I have had people come to me for the new cemetery committee, which are councillor Brokherhurst, councillor Pennell, councillor Lucanic, councillor Gorrin and councillor Watts, who wish to sit on it. And that is the five we require.
And I'd like to be on as well. That could be five or more.
Yeah.
You know, because I'd like to go on as well, please.
I don't see why not.
Well, I was going to offer to sit on that.
Sorry?
I was going to offer to sit on that one. But if you've got enough, it doesn't matter.
We've got enough, we've got, um.
We've got six now.
Six now.
Six now, so. Sorry?
Who's, who's the sixth person, chairman?
Councillor Palmer.
Well, I, I can remember three or four years ago, and I sound to be corrected, councillor Palmer resigned from the new cemetery committee.
Never been elected.
Because one or two people went to West Suffolk council and didn't inform him. And basically, he had a bit of a stroke and he resigned from it. So me, I don't believe I'd have been given a second chance.
Can we go from now and not what was?
Yeah. Right, okay, that's it.
I'm, I'm on the new cemetery then?
You've put your name forward, yes, there.
Cheers, cheers.
Am I or not?
I think, I think a odd number is good, but the more you have, the longer the meetings take.
Yes.
But I do think odd number is good when you're coming to make a decision.
It's not everybody all turn up, is it?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, well, yes. So we'll have seven.
Okay.
Yeah, half the four councillors.
Thank you.
The planning committee, again, I've had people come forward, which is councillor Brokherhurst, councillor Castecchi. Did I get that right? Thank you. Councillor Gorrin, councillor Lucanic and councillor Sealer.
And I'll let the stand as well, please.
Yes.
Okay. If, if the panel is in full agreement there, because that'll then make six.
Yeah.
I don't mind, in light of what happened in my phone past with planning, stepping down this year. Gives you five, are you happy, would that be okay?
You are the current chairman, aren't you?
Well, yes, but that's where it.
But your first meeting, you will choose.
You elect a new chairman.
You elect a new chairman anyway, so.
Yeah, but we need a chairman for the first meeting.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm more than happy to attend the first meeting, um, and then you can elect your chairman from there, if everyone's happy.
Yep, okay. Just bear with me. Emergency panel.
Emergency, was Penny doing something with that?
No, we are currently revising our emergency plan, which went completely wrong before council for approval.
Brilliant, it might be the job for the new, new, uh.
Councillors on that just now.
No.
There, there was Penny, two years ago, Penny was councillor Everton was on the emergency panel, but it's been revised that we haven't had a chance to do it properly.
I'm sure that will be, be addressed when we get a new town clerk.
If, if one's required, I'm, I'm quite happy there.
Yeah, okay.
Ex-far service.
Yes, yeah, so I think we've actually covered everything, haven't we?
Christmas light then, Christmas lighting and events.
Have we missed anybody with those grants now?
About the events, events, is that still in action now?
Why is it not on my minute, uh, agenda? What's that? Oh, yeah, 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 Christmas lighting and events.
So we have councillor Hughes, councillor Watts as councillors, and then there's, um, Ali Barnes, myself as members of staff, and Jill Plantchild as a member of the public.
Yep. Everybody happy with that? Good, so we are there now. Lovely. Uh, nineteen, appointment of any new committees, we don't have any.
Can I have, um, um, can we on block have a proposal, second and vote for?
All of what we've discussed.
Proposed, chairman.
Vote. Yep, so you've got, yeah. Crammed in my hand. Right, okay. Nineteen, we've got no new committees starting. Uh, twenty is a review and adoption of the Suffolk Code of Conduct, it should be in your packs. If not, it's in, in your.
Black folders.
In your black folders at home. Make sure you read it, it is a great bedtime read, I can assure you, you will be able to sleep instantly.
Tipping.
Um, but it, it, it's stuff that guides us of conquer. We'll go on to twenty one, review and adoption of appropriate standing orders as amended in, uh, the first of the third twenty eighteen and financial regulations updated July twenty nineteen. They again are in your black books that you're all given. And again, it's wonderful, exciting reading.
Yes. If you, um, wanted to have an addition to put to standing orders, is that a resolution or?
Yeah. Yeah, if you wanted to put an addition to standing orders, it would be a resolution.
Get it on here, will it?
No. Aren't those those funny little German eggs with a toy inside?
Kinder.
Right, um. So standing orders. Uh, review of representation on work with external bodies and arrangements for reporting back. What have we got currently?
Well, I have a note here that it says that the, their administrative tasks, which when necessary, uh, was reported back to full council.
Yeah.
So.
That's it.
Yeah.
It's things like, uh, myself on the, on the, um, Ling Heath and Edmund Atni of trust. And, and I think Peter's still on it as well, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so whatever arrangements there were will remain. Twenty three, re- review of inventory of land and assets, well, there we go. Go on.
Oh, no, I'm a nuisance tonight.
No, you're not, no.
Don't we own the old cemetery, not the church yard, but don't we own the cemetery?
No. That's not the church.
No, the, the church owned the old church yard.
Church yard, yeah.
But surely we own the.
No.
The cemetery.
The burial, the burial ground, we own the burial ground.
Yes.
The one where you go through and steal guns?
Yes.
Left and right, that's called the burial ground, it's not called a cemetery.
Right, right, yeah, that's, that was what was, sorry, yeah, we own that bit of land.
So why is it on here?
Why is it on here?
Yes.
Well, I don't know. Because all we did, we.
It's reliability, it's not us, yeah.
We just copied from last year, Peter, so.
You'll have to bear with us until we get a town clerk. The girls have done a marvellous job.
Oh, I'm not criticizing everybody now.
No, 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 I didn't, I wasn't criticizing you for criticizing them or accusing you of anything.
Well, well spiced, well spiced, Pete.
We, we also need to consider whether we add the avenue. Um, I've just been doing some research in the heritage centre and I've come across a whole pile of documents which states that the second half of the avenue was gifted to the town by the owners of the land at the time.
Yes.
It also shows quite clearly that all the trees in the avenue were purchased by subscription by the public of Brandon at the time.
So they're our trees, our trees.
And it's at least half of the avenue is ours.
Good, good. Can you, um, give that information?
Yeah, you can have the whole box if you like, Jackie. Pop it.
Hold on, hold on. Many people talking at once here, thank you. Um, yeah, because there is a query over it at the current time, isn't there? And you would need that information. Thank you, right, okay. Peter.
It was General DeLuven here that gave that half of it to Harry.
There was two people, I believe, Peter, from memory of reading it.
Yeah, but. He's had quite a lot.
Yeah.
The general did.
Yeah, but again, there was two people, I mean, aside, there was a.
I'm very conscious that we've been here two and a, two and a quarter hours, so can you take this up with?
Right, now, one more point with this asset. I thought you owned the new cemetery, man, a row.
We do.
So why is it left over here?
A typo.
It's never been on previously.
It's never been on previously.
It's not on, it's not because we haven't put it on, Peter, it's because it hasn't been put on previously. But I will write, write it down on notes and we will investigate.
Well spiced, Pete.
Don't forget, we haven't had a town clerk for.
Oh, yeah, no.
Seven years.
Look, could you sell us a decade or two, Donal? No?
Right, I'm going to move on to Agenda item number twenty four, confirmation of arrangements for insurance companies and irrespective of insured risk. And that now is pretty much up to date, where it hadn't been previously by our previous, um, non-qualified town clerk. Review, uh, twenty five, review of the councils and or staff subscriptions to other bodies. That's another one that's just copied over, isn't it?
Yeah, and we have to do that, so South is, is a professional body that provides us. And we pay one thousand three hundred and seventy one pounds fifty one per annum to them. And then the Federation of Burials and Cremations, which we have to belong to, and they're two hundred and one thousand sixty pounds.
Lovely, thank you. Everybody happy with that? Good. Twenty six, to determine the time and place of ordinary meetings at the full council, up to and including the next annual meeting of the full council. I would suggest.
I'll go over in the home, okay?
Go on.
Can I ask a question, please? I didn't ask this question four years ago, when we were given a very similar list, can you remember Vic, David? So can we confirm that the red one, which is the town meeting and the full council meeting, is and had was the second Monday of the month? Yes?
Yeah.
And the planning meetings will always be on the first Monday of the month? The reason I ask was, was because when this sheet of paper was presented last time with all the colours and the dates, we used to meet, the full council met on the first Monday of the month.
Hmm.
And we all, we all approved that, and nobody had picked that one.
As I understand, it is the second Monday of the month because of the first Monday of the month. Okay, but then back Monday.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah, that's all right. So nothing's changed, it will remain as it was this past year.
It changed last time.
No, no, that's wrong. Uh, twenty seven.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Can I, um, propose, um, that we potentially do, as per Annette's, um, comments, with regard the space for the cemetery, we put in another cemetery visit for the year, so that we have two, so that we can see for the cemetery committee, the progress and what needs to be done on a regular basis throughout the year.
At, at the new cemetery?
Well, both, both. It needs to be a cemetery visit twice a year, I think.
Anybody second that?
I, I would second it, but suggest that it's not a, an ordinary council meeting session.
Yeah, it's.
It would have to be an additional one.
It would be an additional one.
Because it, it would have to. Yep, well done, vote. Got all that, Jackie?
Yeah.
Twenty seven, confirm the lead person for safeguarding who is currently due, isn't it?
Yeah.
Are you happy to continue?
Yes, that's okay. And also, um, we were talking in the office, that perhaps one of the girls would also. Brought it up, didn't you?
Yeah, we, we wondered if it wouldn't be a good idea to have a member of staff as a safeguarding lead, as well as a councillor.
Makes sense to me. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it so.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty eight.
Yeah, I think I've got proposed seconded, the finding proposals and seconded, Paul Lewis, please.
Okay. Gary, seconder.
What, what, what?
June for the.
Paul Gorrin, it's for everything we've been just recently.
Hand for the, the meetings, please.
For meetings, uh, dates and safeguarding.
Hmm, yeah.
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 Good, good. Twenty eight, resolution from councillor Brokherhurst, number four, seven, four. I had to look at that because I nearly said seven, four, seven, so there are. Um, Brandon Town Council results to make a formal objection to the provost. Cranswick development has discussed and recommended by planning on second of May twenty twenty four. Uh, I think most of you, if not all of you, heard the ladies that came and the councillor that came who spoke against this. So I would ask for a seconder, which will be me. And then we go to the vote and basically Brandon Town Council can put in an official, um, thing. So I'll go to councillor. Could test. Castecchi, Ben Jude and then Paul Gorrin.
No, I'm sorry, I was just going, I was going with it.
Oh, you were voting, I thought you were answering.
Voting and I'm reading and I'm voting.
Right, okay, so hangs up for a vote then.
Yes.
Yep, you, you have them as. Well done. Twenty nine, resolution. Twenty-nine, resolution from councillor Brokherhurst, number four, seven, five. Brandon Town Council results to make a formal objection to the expansion of the aggregate facility and batching plant at Br- Brandon Road Eriswell, as discussed and recommended by planning on the second of May twenty twenty-four. Um. Over to you on that, Gary.
Yeah.
Do, oh, do I have a seconder?
Uh, who proposed it?
Well, Gary's proposing it.
I'll, I'll second it and he'll move the motion.
Right, go on, you move the motion.
Yeah, again, this was, uh, a full discussion in any other business in the planning meeting that we recently held, um, where the planning committee have become aware of, um, applications being made. Um, the planning committee felt that we should be making an objection to it with the increased vehicle movements that will occur within the town. Um, and again, as per the previous resolution, coming to full council to get some last vacation that they're happy for, the planning committee on full council's behalf, to, um, to send a letter of error of objection. Um, if there's any further information, I think Pitt had some figures, um, and councillor Goring and Castecchi was also present. Councillor, um, you can.
Right, um, as we know, there's a considerable amount of work being done at RAF Lake Atheneath, uh, building, uh, hard standings and buildings for the increased number of F thirty-five aircraft there. That, that facility is to help to build that, okay? So they've got to have an increased, larger facility, so they've got more materials on site to be able to do the job properly. And that'll be the end of it, that'll be an MOD decision. So I think we should, Bruce, you would recommend that not object to it.
Well, I completely object to what you say because I have been told by the one-star general who runs the forty-eighth fighter wing, that all development as far as the F thirty-fives has been done and they do not need concrete from ca- uh, uh, the facility across the road. I have been told only three days ago by Colonel Ryan, uh, Gallo of Mildenhall, likewise, I haven't spoken to anybody from Felwell, um, base, but, uh, Colonel Gar- uh, Gallo assured me that they are in the same position. What the aggregate company is doing there is building a massive concrete batching plant that will service the whole of the south-east of England.
Here, here.
And that is a fact. They are also, if you notice, under, uh, um, um, all I can think of is penalty, that, the, the Wainford site. They should be now off of that because, again, it was only put in place for the RAF, uh, Lake Atheneath and drop-down area to save vehicles queuing outside on the road. And the work has all been done and it is no longer needed.
So, so they, they did get an application to increase the time on that technical run on the Wainford.
It was declined.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's a lot of rain. Okay, so you're saying you've got official to say that all the work, regarding the F thirty-five work, all the building work is completed.
That's what I've been told, I can only go.
That's what you're saying.
This is what I have been told.
You just said it, you just said it.
Yeah, this is what I have been told, David.
I'm arguing with you.
I can't, I can only.
I know the situation there, but I see what you said.
Can you let, let me finish without interrupting? I can only go on the information that I have been told. If it turns out to be incorrect, then I was given incorrect information, but I doubt it by the station commander. Councillor Lu Canick.
Um, you did mention the Wainford roadside, the people there are operating without planning permission.
Yeah.
They had a four-year period that has expired, they have been informed they need to clear the site. RAF Lake Atheneath do not need that site on the Wainford Road, which was connected to the batching plant. If all of you drive to RAF Lake Atheneath and two hundred metres before you get to gate one, you look over your left-hand shoulder, what they have done to that Breckland landscape there is an absolute disgrace. There's a three-tiered bund, which is over five metres high. This is in an SPA. Let me just remind people what SPA, Special Protected Area. That's a Breckland area, a Breckland view, a scene, a Bre- of special interest. And what have they done to it? They've absolutely decimated it. And where councillor Palmer's not really up to speed and well behind the curve is West Suffolk council would not pass it three weeks ago, they deferred it because there was a lack of detail from the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can I just say there, okay, I don't think councillor Lu Canick knows what he's saying, okay? Because that planned application there was and still is a temporary application until the work for the F thirty-fives was finished.
What, what are you talking about, the batching plant or Wainford Road?
We're, we're talking about Wainford Road.
Just tell him he's talking nonsense.
You diverted from the.
Just tell him he's talking nonsense, will you?
Councillor Palmer, they have been told to vacate the site.
Okay, the one on the Wainford Road?
The one on the Wainford Road.
They've been told to vacate it.
They have, because it is no longer needed.
A temporary planned application from the start.
Yes, and it has expired, they tried to renew it and it was turned down, it was turned down at appeal and they now have.
So we're through the application. Dave, with the grace of respect, when you come to the council table, get your facts.
Uh, can I, no, no more of that, thank you. Right, councillor Brokher.
Yeah, on, on the Wainford Road one, um, also within the, the temporary, uh, but, and this isn't part of that resolution, but for information, the Wainford Road one, um, not only they've been told to vacate, it's supposed to be returned to as prior.
That's right.
To, to before, yeah. So they should, nobody should be there and it should now be back to, to the closest you can get to Brexit, well, clear of, uh, and debris.
So that means breaking up the road that they've put in.
Yeah, and all the tar that they put in, which they were not. They were not allowed to put in at the first place.
The curbs and the drains.
Yeah.
It looks amazing.
Right, okay, so can we go for a vote on this? That Brandon Town Council result, results to make a formal objection to the expansion of the aggregate facility and batching plant of Brandon Road Eriswell, as discussed and recommended by planning. Uh, objections? Right, thank you. Item number thirty, resolution to exclude the public and press. That pursuant to the Public Body's Admissions to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, the public and press being excluded from the meeting temporarily due to the confidential management of business to be discussed concerning votes, land, staff and contract. Could I have a seconder? Well, we've got two. Vote, thank you. Thank you very much, members of the public.